To determine certain miles related to the bombs, provided for the payment of the bombing, disposition of the proceeds of the bomb and other miles related thereto.
In this time, do we have anybody signed up? Okay, so there's no one signed up to speak on this?
Okay, we want to sign up for the question here. Moving right along, number six resolution, on the resolution aim, Dillon County Recreation All-Stars, seven and eight years old. Can we get a motion? I'll make that motion. The motion can get a second. Okay, do we have any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? This time, we'll ask our chairman of our recreation committee, Mr. Steven Greys, along with Councilman James Campbell, to go down in front of the council and present to those who will receive the seven and eight year old flag.
Get them outside. Get them out of them outside.
I'd like to say something about this team. They averaged forty-two points a game and gave up zero the whole time in all parts. I just want to say if they make their way, we at Dillon County Council, along with our administrative members, we thank them for a job they've done. We want to thank all the coaches for a job they've done, and we want you to know that we are very proud of the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, brother. I've got Zamir Hunter. Good Friday. Okay? Jamari Allen.
Let yourself sit, son. Take your time, they're gonna get to you.
Listen for your name, guys, so we can move along.
Let's take a picture. Right this way. That's it. Let's move that box back here. Wait one second. Thank you. Jamari Wilson. The Kerry Bruce. Dedman Smith. Daniel K. Park Jr.
I gotta say something about this kid, because he's never played football before in his life. Lower State championship game, he had eight carries, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven yards, and six touchdowns.
Hey, we're all very proud of you. You don't win a state championship all the time. We're very proud of you. Now, we got some coaches.
This time, we'd like to recognize the coaches. Head coach, Terry McCray. Assistant coach, Bo Towler. Assistant coach, Daniel Wright. Coach Wright has all the awards and stuff that we won, the plaque, state championship, lower state. We're gonna leave these up here for a couple of days in the county council building, if that's okay. Assistant coach, Terrence McCray.
He has to have to vote for the floor on this next one. Next on the agenda will be, on the resolution of EP, Dillon County Recreation All-Stars, eleven and twelve year olds recognition. If that's a resolution, can I get a motion? An eleven and twelve year old resolution? Do we get a second? Okay, any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Greys and Councilman Campbell, if you all agree with this time.
We've got some of the coaches here and a couple of players. David Trowell.
It's for the eleven and twelve year old County Recreation All-Stars and recognition of the accomplishment of winning two thousand and sixteen South Carolina Athletic Program Lower State Football Title.
Congratulations. Good job, well done.
We lost eighteen to sixteen to Rock Hill that Friday night. Rock Hill hasn't lost a game in two years. Coming in averaging forty-two points a game, and they're closing the game in two years with like forty-five to, I think, twelve or thirteen, so we should've had them. Should've had them. Yeah, those are the ones that we won throughout the season. We're gonna leave them up here.
Yeah, I'd just like to take liberty to say at this time, we do appreciate you coming, and we are proud of the eleven and twelve year old as well as the seven and eight year old, and again, we just want to let you know, job well done, and we thank you guys who do the community service and who work and give us your Saturday or whatnot, and give us your time that you could be doing other things, but you take your time to work these kids and partners. We want you to know that we do appreciate what you guys do, and you guys have done a real good job. Job well done. Thank you. Moving right along, next on the agenda of the resolution, got Lakeview High School, twenty-sixteen Class A State Football Championship. Can we get a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, we got any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This time, I'm coming down along with the past chair, my brothers Finkley, and along with the Lakeview Council member, Jack Scott. We will come down and we will stand with the Lakeview coaches and present that resolution to you at this time.
Lakeview Plight to the Resolution. Lakeview High School in recognition of the accomplishments of the winning two thousand and sixteen Class A State Football Championship presented by Dillon County Council.
If they return to their seats, I'd like to say again, we just honor and we appreciate Lakeview High School. Lakeview High School is a school that we all know here in Dillon County, and they won the state championship, and we're proud of them. We're glad that they were here, and we're glad to be able to recognize them. Moving right along with the agenda, a resolution Dillon High School, twenty-sixteen Class Three Lower State Football Title. Do we get a motion to approve that resolution?
I got motion.
Do we get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This time, we ask the Dillon High School representative to come up, along with Councilman Harold Moody, and a Councilman Robbie Cowan, to go up and they will present the plaque today at this time.
Well, before I make the presentation, I think it was Hillary Clinton said it takes a village. Everybody in the state of South Carolina knows about Dillon County football, not just Wildcat football, Dillon County football, but everybody certainly knows about Wildcat football. I grew up watching them in the LPD Conference years ago, and of course, they changed the classifications and we moved up, but as long as I can remember, and I taught at Dillon High School for about twenty-eight years, as long as I can remember, we have been in the playoffs. I don't think we missed a year that we weren't in the playoffs. And the Wildcats will hit you, and they continue the tradition this year, and they fell just a little bit short, but I have to say, I watched the game, and guys, it could've gone either way, but y'all put wood to that quarterback. He knows who y'all are, I can assure you of that. But anyhow, I would, I think Coach Hayes is accepting this plaque today, but Coach Hayes, I'm gonna do like Councilman Scott, I'm just gonna read what it says quickly. Dillon High School in recognition of the accomplishments of winning the class, or excuse me, the winning the two thousand and sixteen Class Three A Lower State Football Title presented by the Dillon County Council, and a job well done.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Again, we want to say about the Dillon Wildcats, just like we did all the others, we appreciate you coming, and we thank you guys for the job that you guys have done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving along with the agenda, number seven, new business. Letter A, Wayne Green Karate Kids. We get a motion to hear or to accept whatever presentation that Wayne Green has with his karate kid? Get a motion at this time?
How you doing?
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Glenn at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not a stranger, so I'm glad this is gonna be easy, because I know everybody myself. I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Jack. I asked Scott, how you doing? Everybody else I know, guys I've worked with, schoolmates. I come to y'all because we're gonna see all the kids come through here today. Even though we see good things happening, they still crying out. They're not gonna see it in their faces, but you go in the communities that I be seeing, they're crying out for our help. We got some good heads in the council. Y'all can put together, then you can make what we're doing a lot better. But I know in the past, I had came to the council, and y'all never said no. I've been teaching karate going on forty-one years. I recall when I used to come in and Horace Arnett and Mr. Monsieur Williams sat up here and tell me, "Son, keep on doing what you're doing." I'm fifty-one years old, I started, you know, I started teaching karate when I was twelve years old, believe it or not. And these kids today, it's a different bunch. They need all the help that they can get. If you don't think I don't come to you and ask you something for a child, you just wait until they decide you're home. I will call you. If I see a kid, what I do, I do not charge anyone that cheats karate. We take every kid that is throughout the whole county. This year, two thousand and sixteen, we had eleven kids from Dillon County that won a national title. You want to hear from them, cause it's karate, it's not the biggest football, but they won a national title. That's from the east coast to the west coast, and eleven of them came from that out of this county. Most of them came from Dillon and Lakeview, one came from Loudoun. But it's because of what y'all do. Two times a year, y'all helped me put on a karate tournament, and y'all helped out, and I want to say thank you. For the last, I stayed out for two years, for the last twenty years, I've been coming to the council, and y'all never turned me down. And I see we got two new councilors this year, Mr. Cowan, Mr. Scott. Y'all be hearing from me, I know Mr. Cowan, he's gonna be sending you as a classmate of mine. Buzz and Finkley worked with me for years. Robbie, when I started by teaching back in the nineties, believe it, Mr. Cowan, he was one of the first persons that came and helped me out with the kids, believe it or not. He took care of kids, karate tournaments, and they did it out of the kindness of his heart. It's Stevie, uh, Stevie and baseball. Everybody I know, we on the same page. We know that we gotta do what, we gotta do right for our kids, and I want to thank y'all for what y'all doing. I got a little presentation for you. It's not much, but it's a thank you that would mean to you to say, keep on doing what you're doing. I know y'all jobs are hard. Y'all got some tough decisions to make, and everybody not on the same page sometimes, but the key is, always keep praying and do the right thing. And with this presentation, I know there's two councilors that's not here with us today, Mr. Randy Owens and Mr. Bobby Moody, but I do have plaques, and one, this administrator, Clay Young, is not here, but I wish that y'all could get these to him, because they was here in two thousand and sixteen, and I think it's only right, but it was a part of this great thing that happened in two thousand and sixteen, and I think they need a plaque also. If I could call you by name first, to give you presentations. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Archie Scott. Mr. T.L. Fitton. Mr. Harold Moody. Mr. Robbie Cowan. Mr. Stevie Greys. And I say mister, I'm sorry if I don't say councilor, but I'm used to calling people mister, missus. No harm against it, but I thank y'all for what y'all doing. Thank you, from the bottom of my heart.
Can I say something before he goes? My whole life, I know where you're coming from, and I thank you for what you've done. My whole life, my wife's sitting there, and my whole life has been full of karate and fighting. So, my wife, now we spent a lot of money putting our kids in karate, and my kids are still, my boys are still into this ultimate fighting now. That's why I can't have talk right now, I caught a foot there. So, and I caught one in the seat of the fridge for my wife. But I appreciate what you're doing, I really do. I really, because my life is so full of things.
Also, if I could just echo a figure they called when he said, I've known you over the years, and with kids, you have pretty much built this community, and even when things were tough, you've always kept things going, and I certainly appreciate your efforts and everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank y'all again for having me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will.
I will.
Alright. I told him I'd tell him about that. Thank y'all. Y'all got a hard job. Thank you.
Moving right along with the agenda on the new business, our account administrator, contract, we have a personnel matter, we'll be looking at that later under item thirteen, and there will be no actions taken on the executive session. However, there any action that is to be taken concerning that, we will come out of that session, and we will have to take that action over session. Okay? Alright, so moving right along, recreational request? There's no recreational requests, okay? Old business, judicial settlement.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, that requires no motion, as stated here, we're still in the midst of this, we're getting much closer. The drainage appears to be working out over this last rain. We had some folks go back into spec, we still got some minor leaks, so our architect or engineer is not gonna sign off until this thing is completely satisfied, as councilors, you know, told me to say so. So, I'll be back next month, hopefully with a report that we closed out and they've satisfied all their obligations.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Moving right along on the old business, got a resident from west countryside move to speak concerning their community. Mary Miller will be the speaker. Mr. Greys, would you yield that to Ms. Mary Miller, please? Thank you. Ms. Miller, at this time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mary Miller, and I'm here representing our neighborhood on the cross, oh, nurse, closing the crossing on west countryside road. We have five families on west, on our side of the tracks. Three of these families are in their sixties and sevens. We also have three businesses on our side of the tracks. In addition, farmers use our road throughout the year to transport their farming equipment to plant and harvest their crops. We don't know the safety concerns of CSX, but we'd like to tell you what our concerns are. In case of emergencies, we want the ambulances, the fire trucks, and law enforcement to get to us as quickly as they can, possibly to save a life, our home, or to stop a crime. If the crossing is closed, emergency vehicles will have to go further down three oh one to the overhead bridge, or come through, down thirty-four, through the busy district of Lowe's Truck Stop, onto Dozer Road to get to us. In recent times, some of our families, members of our families on that road have already experienced life-threatening situations, and the fast response of emergency vehicles have likely saved their lives. If west countryside becomes a dead end road, our property values will plunge. Who wants to live on a dead end road? When we chose this area to build or buy our homes, for most of us, it was to live out the rest of our lives. Will that change now? It just depends. Our reasons for keeping the crossing open are the unrestricted access of emergency vehicles, the unrestricted response from county law enforcement for our safety and protection, the convenience of an open road to Highway three oh one for two-way traffic, to prevent the inevitable decline of our property values, to avoid predictable adverse effects on the businesses on our road, to retain our present mail delivery, and to keep our rural neighborhood intact. We learned a long time ago what to do when coming to a railroad crossing. If the gates are down and the lights are flashing red, we know to stop, and when the gates are lifted, we can safely cross. From all the years of crossing the tracks, it appears everyone has acted responsibly, as there's been no accidents there all these many years, maybe not ever. So, why close the crossing for safety concerns? We support the inland port, because it can potentially bring other industries into Dillon County and create jobs that we sorely need. We simply don't see how keeping the crossing open would have any bad effect whatsoever on inland ports. We're asking you to keep the crossing open as is vital in many ways to those of us who live on west countryside road. We love our rural neighborhood, help us keep it as it is. Thank you for giving our request your consideration. These are some of my neighbors, Pauline Emily Moody, Erin and Amy Musso White, Buck and Joey Campbell, Martin Alvarez, and Mike and Mary Miller. We appreciate you giving our request to keep the opening, the crossing open. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, for coming. We want to thank all of you from the countryside community for showing up today and voicing your concerns. I want you to know, very my concern, your concerns has not fallen on deaf ears. This is very tentatively, I just thought it would be fitting and fair that at this time that we hear from CSX and DRT. Thank you. At this time, a representative from CSX, you may take the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member to the council. I'm John Dillard with CSX, and certainly glad to be here today, and certainly heard the, understand the residents' concerns, and happy to get a chance to hear those today. This really came about, this issue of the potential crossing closure, as we were working with works authority and others to develop this site, and determining what we would need to effectively serve the site from CSX's main line, which currently runs through the county. And so, what we need off of that main line is what we call a siding, to be able to effectively enter and exit the port property. And so, it's basically, you know, effectively that main line out there today is a one-lane road, and what we need is an exit off of that road in the form of another railroad track to get into and out of the port facility. So, we started looking at the design and thinking of, well, what do we need? How long of that, of a second track do we need to accommodate not only existing, the existing day one of the inland port, but future growth of the inland port, and also future growth in that area, if it so suits the county to develop that area in such a way that would provide for additional rail users or additional industrial users. You know, we are also, as a company, looking at, you know, the growth of our business over time, and what that means long-term, to the way we serve places like the inland port. And so, what we determined, the most effective way to build this at the And so, what we determined, the most effective way to build this at the outset would be to build a sixteen thousand-foot siding adjacent to our main line, west of the main line from approximately Fairfield Road down south of Dothan. And so, obviously, when you look at that, you look at that area that's, you know, right through Countryside and then also Skid Drive. So, we approached the county and said, you know, how feasible is it to potentially close those crossings given that, you know, we're going to need that much capacity to effectively enter and exit the port terminal today, but also continue to exit, enter and exit the port facility and any other industries that are out there in the future? And it's, as our, you know, experience is, if it's feasible and affordable on the front end to build as much capacity as you can, you know, on the first go-around as opposed to having to come back and piecemealing additional capacity. And if you're, you know, continuing to sell the port facility in other areas to potential customers, if you have that existing capacity to show them, that generally is a positive and a benefit for them to say, "Look, we've got, CSX has got enough capacity to efficiently serve, you know, your future business or whatever future business may come into the port." Now, certainly with that comes these concerns and we understand that. You know, and to the extent we can help to work to allay some of those concerns and still keep, you know, still close the crossing, we're certainly happy to do that. It's not, it's not a request we come to. We don't come to you with this lightly. We certainly understand the impacts and it's a tough thing to do. We hope we can work together cooperative with you to get it done. And again, so we can all see the benefits of potential growth in the future in the right way. Certainly, there are any time that we can look to reduce the number of gray crossings. We do think there are safety benefits to that. Anytime you can reduce the chances that cars and people interact with trains, the better. Particularly if there are overpasses nearby or suitable alternate access. Those decisions aren't easy and they, as I said, they certainly come with consequences and impacts. But from CSX's standpoint, that's what led us here today to this request. Is trying to have enough capacity to efficiently serve the port today and tomorrow and into the future as well as any other, you know, businesses that might be attracted to Dillon County because of the inland port in that area. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Question for the panel. Any question for the community? May I ask you something?
Yes, sir.
That, um, that road lead that you're talking about out there, does that going to stop the port from coming? The road is open or closed?
If the, so if we keep the crossing open, won't it stop the inland port from coming?
Yes, sir.
No, I don't, I don't think it will, but I think it will, it will significantly change the design that we have in place and it could delay the opening of the port. And I think from our standpoint, again, it's, we think it's, you know, economically feasible and otherwise to do this at the outset of this project so that, you know, we have the capacity in place for future growth.
Good thing for the community.
I'll be happy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time we have someone from DOT.
I don't think we have anybody from DOT. I think that's our representative.
Gentlemen from CSX, we want to thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your presentation. And with this Miller, Miller and the Countryside Community, we want to thank you guys for coming this way. Alright, moving right along with the agenda. On the old business, let it be, discussion of Fund 45.
Chairman, I've done some, you know, research on Fund 45. Fund 45 covers, uh, covers a lot of capital projects. What I was interested in was Fund 45, section five, that seven, that fifty thirteen, fifty fifteen double O, Lakeview, Memphis, Central area. And also forty five, that seven, that's fifty thirteen, fifty twenty-two, that double O, sewer lot area. Back in twenty thirteen, I think, when we got through, uh, the capital sales tax project. That's when it was, it was in twenty thirteen and, um, let's see. The maintenance, uh, three thirteen, three three, uh, twenty thirteen. This is what was in the Dillon Herald. This is in the maintenance of that maintenance. Said Dillon County Council voted to use six hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents in capital sales tax project funds to assist the town lotter with infrastructure issues. The money is the, is the line item from Highway thirty-eight industrial park improvements to the capital sales tax. County Administrator Clay Young said that Councilman Buzzard, Franklin Lauter, Mary Nancy Breckman had discussed the infrastructure issue facing the town and came up with some projects. Young said this was a good way to assist the town, which remained for us. And said the town was required to send requests to the town for approval. That means we just didn't give the money to the town. Whenever they came up with a project, they would send it in with a bill and we, you know, we paid whatever. And, uh, Finkley said it costs more than what the town is making just to keep us, uh, infrastructure. Finkley said by using this money, they will be able to help the town, help Highway thirty-eight area and all the way up towards ninety-five. Finkley said if the town lotter can't handle the sewer, they will not be able to expand out to Highway thirty-eight and ninety-five. He thought that this would be money, well, this is the money and it could be used in basic money for rents and a great, a great deal doing. County Council Chairman Austin Scott asked the county attorney to vote if this was legal use of the money. The vote was handed. It was legal as long as it was used in accordance with the ordinance. The council passed a motion to use the money to assist the town lotter. When the motion, the Council Officer Secretary Joe Johnson all approved the motion. Mary Nancy Breckman told the Herald, "We are pleased that these funds will be available." Okay, later on in the year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, as we were drawing the budget up, we thought about late use of infrastructure money. We said we need to protect that money as well as the lotter. So, we put this money that we approved, we added six hundred and seventy-five. We, uh, in late use money and we put it in the budget. And the budget owner stated the Dillon County Council has concluded that the capital project sales taxes are complete. Therefore, all remaining funds will be transferred with the Fund 45 capital project. Approximately two point one billion dollars is left in the budget. In an interview with County Administrator Clay Young, he stated that the council established three line items in the budget to address this challenge. Two point one billion left. It says over two, left, the county council set aside six hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars toward including sewer in the lotter thirty-eight area. Five hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fourteen toward infrastructure in the Lakeview area. The remaining funds to help assist the county with other water and sewer roads for our state's economic development of some type of a capital project. So, this was, this was passed. This money has been in the budget. Every year we have to bring it up again. To begin, and we had it in the, this past budget. And every year, whenever we advertise the budget, I got, every year it's advertised in the paper. Which, you know, we got, what, like, forty-five. Okay, James Campbell called me not so long ago and said, "That money, you know, Lakeview, God, it's gone. Ain't no money there." I said, "What?" He said, "It ain't there." He said, "It's gone." And, um, this is what we got in our packet today. And look in the, you know, Fund 45. And it, those numbers I showed you, it shows Lakeview with five hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-eight cent left. It shows lotter has a hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars left. I think what has happened, uh, we've, we've been hurt for money issue. We've been hurt. Everything went real close. And we had some bills and, uh, that come in and I think they were paid and I think a lot of this money was used to pay those bills. And I know it was a lot of money spent at Harbor Freight. And I, like I say, we just, we just sent two hundred thousand dollars back on the road. We had about to come, ours. And Rich has got down here, that's the seventy-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven. That, you mean that, close to two hundred thousand, that's what it is.
Yeah, that might be. I think they, uh, Cry County has reimbursed us two hundred thousand, that's what it says.
And then we have, um, we have a lot of stuff we, like I said, we have a couple of yield bonds that'll be April before we got, got in. There's some equipment that was bought, some stock equipment that had to be paid for. And, um, it probably came out of that fund, but this thing is still listed. And it's still listed in the budget. And the only way to take it out would be, you know, would be through three readings of public hearing. And I certainly don't believe that after they gave it to Lakeview and Lotter, they would take it back. If they don't have the money now, we can understand that. Leave it staying in the budget, leave it in Neshir's budget and as money comes in, the county's going to get on their feet and they'll get the fee on the hurdle. I think that one of the problems is. Leave it there and just, just please don't take it from lottery lucky. Right now, it will be in here until, um, July fourth, since we start another budget. And that's when I hope we're, here that we're leaving the budget. I don't know how much money is in it now, Rich. If you could tell us what. We got a lot of things that I wish to, you know, the chairman, maybe we'll call a special meeting concerning this. So, full council workshop or something so we can go over the details and ask Rich more about it.
I, I guess kind of nutshell, the, these funds are still in the budget to be funded. But right now, we just, we don't have the money to do it, do the projects.
Yeah, and I'm glad you, Councilman Finkley, I'm glad you brought that presentation to the floor. But however, I don't have a problem, uh, calling a full council workshop. But I think we need to back up for a moment. And if there is a conflict as concerning how the money was spent or how the money was allocated or what happened to the money. I think one of the things that we probably would be reasonable to do is to get in touch with our previous administrator, Mr. Clay Young, who is responsible for presenting the council a balanced budget. Uh, some kind of way he balanced the budget with something. And maybe he can tell us what exactly happened to Fund 45. And if we can get into the table, maybe we can get some clarity and maybe we can move on. Because, I mean, I'm hearing what Councilman Finkley's saying, but then I'm hearing that there is no money. So, we've got a conflict here. And the only way to solve that conflict is to get to the one that originated with. And it originated and we get it on a budget. And that person who was responsible for so presenting a budget to this council was, uh, past administrator Clay Young.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think too that, um, Richard knows where the money in Lotter went because we, it was in him with a bill every time the lotter needed anything done. He didn't pay him unless it was a bill there. And he told me where it was going to, you know, and everything was, was with thirty-eight infrastructure. And I agree with you that the budget was balanced last year, this year. If the money is not there, uh, I was thinking, Richard probably knows where it is. I think it just happened recently when we hit a pay though.
I think Bruce was kind of got us in a jam. It's tied by inland port property that is like two point three million. And that's going to get us backed down for years making payroll.
You said the money was there with Clay Lester. You told us it's probably gone two years ago, Rich.
No, it was.
Part of this, they want to double that. According to county treasurer, it's been gone.
Well, it went to the general fund, I think you have to start. It depends what you, I, I guess, you have two scenarios, I guess. The, uh, when the projects were completed, whatever left of the money Buzz talked about went to the general fund. And then they came along and budgeted. Part of that to Lotter, part of Clay Young, part of the Dillon.
Rich, so if this thing is getting right back to the day, goes through the thirty-first, you know, and, um, except him and it, uh, I think he never, current taxes that have come in. We've put in the late, four million, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars of taxes this year. According to the year, the same so far, now the two million, twenty-three thousand, twenty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars have been collected. So, that means that we have two million, two hundred and fifty-five, uh, plus four hundred and six and three, two million, two hundred and fifty-five, four hundred and six dollars and three cents owed to the county right now. And that's going to be plus interest because that's in July fifteenth, any taxes paid.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's right. Through December, third of first. We've collected the money, you know, all the way up through January fifteenth. That money's not been allocated back out yet.
And I spoke to Mrs. H. Sheer, the treasurer. She told me that the money had been gone for years. She said that County Administrator, Mr. Clay Young, had spent that money down through the years. I said, "Where is that?" She said, "The money's gone." I think one of the things that we're going to go wrong, for example, for a certain time, even more. But I think one of the things that we need to look at, I do agree with Councilman Finkley. We do need to call a full council workshop. But however, there are some understanding, we're reading up the law, that the projects that were initiated were completed, that the money does return back to the general fund. So, what we probably need to start at is make sure that all those projects were completed. And if they were completed, that's a perfect argument. And if they were not completed, then there are also issues. And again, I think we need to take those issues up with Mr. Young, who had presented the budget.
We have a letter somewhere in the county. They have, they have a letter right now saying that this project was completed and it's over with. I think Linda Hayes might have a copy of that letter.
Yes, because I disagree with you. All you've got to do is go to the intersection of Highway thirty-eight and nine seventeen and rather than there being Oak Grove Industrial Park, you've got an Oak Grove Hayfield. And where is the money?
We, we will do, and I, and you know, I can understand y'all's concern. We live in that area and there has been some confusion probably for the last couple of months or better about this money. But however, I just don't think we can solve it today. Believe we can get back together and tell the meeting between the council and again, do some research and try to find out what took place and what happened.
But I think we can't carry y'all to meet with us because she carries the money from down there.
So, we will certainly ask her that. We'll ask her to get. So, Mr. Buzz, you saying it was there when Clay Lester, you saying it's been spent since our other, our interim been a part of it, been around?
I think, I think.
It's still in the. It's what he said.
And Richard, where the money's went?
Yeah, no, I mean, I can give you an overview of it now, but I, I guess probably, we had a big fund balance. When part of this money was part of it also, two point one million went into that. But I think we probably look at, we spent what, seven and a half million with wine and gourmet. Uh, I guess Judicial Center got five million. Uh, well, I know we got fire department out there, uh, bang them. So, I mean, we.
Every year when we approve the ordinance, so we, uh, we, we, we ordinate. I think everyone did the last one. It's an ordinance budget, you know, to provide appropriations. And, and, and this ordinance will, and these ordinance end, every, every year when we pass a budget. And you say it's in that buck, in that, in that ordinance, that that money was for Fund 45 and that money first been, it should never come out, but.
Chairman, can I, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
To start with, I'd like to thank everyone from my district for coming up here today and representing Lakeview and the county council district. Thank you very much. And what I have to say about this is, all of us in here know what kind of discussions went on last year, at last county council meeting about the same money. We've had discussions, click forward, about the same money. Now, we're having another discussion about the same money. And you can take this subject and go on and on and on and on. And I make this suggestion, if you will, please. We have a new county administrator in the process of taking over today. He's very intelligent and enriched together between some of the councilmen, maybe all of us. We, I feel like we need to set, just do away with this today because we're going to midnight discussing this thing. I want you to know that. I want you to know that. So if we will turn this thing over to Rodney and Richard, and let them just handle it, and I know they're going to do it in the right way, because we've already had discussions. And I want the people in my district to know that we've had these discussions, and they're civil. There's nothing that gets loud. We're talking about educated people, civilized people, and we don't need to sit here till twelve o'clock tonight and go on with these figures. And let Rodney, that's his job, let him have.
Yeah, we, and we won't do that. I promise you, we won't go on till twelve o'clock tonight. But we just can't drop it off, you know, and rock his hand. He's a newcomer. He was not here when all this stuff took place. It wouldn't be, it, it wouldn't be fair to him to do that. I, I think what we need to do, we need, again, have a full council workshop, contact administrator Clay Young, contact Kenny DeGosse. Let's start from the beginning, how this thing developed, and let's research it from there. Okay, moving right along, financial report.
Uh, let's go through, uh, a fund balance.
Before we start with him, I, I will say, Jamie Estes, every attention being here today to go in detail. Uh, we had a meeting with her about this. She's got the fluids.
Thanks, sir.
Um, Scott, where we're staying cash-wise, uh, you know, saying we have not allocated any kind of money from January taxes, it's just through, the income is through December thirty-first, because January tax has not been allocated to us. Uh, general fund, we've got one point two million, we've got the CD, uh, two savings accounts, about four hundred thousand, for a total of three point six million. And the restricted funds that we have against that is the sinking fund for bond payments, is, uh, close to three million, which leaves us about six hundred and seventy thousand available at this time.
Any other questions for the, uh, financial department? Not moving out long, let's go to the board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a, a few minor things, nothing breathtaking whatsoever. Uh, I've got a letter today that we are in possession of the, a bus that the, uh, school district has donated to us. I got that confirmation today, so I'll be working up some restrictions on that bus to present to you folks, to amend any kind of way you'd like, all right? Uh, there was talk, Mr. Finkley, uh, and I think Mr. Coward prior to, uh, the, the new year about having perhaps a employee party. And so we are shaping that up now, looks like March fourteenth, at the Wellness Center. Uh, should have a lot of nice prizes for a lot, from our vendors, so that's, that's something we got on the dock now. I think our employees deserve it, as you know, they work extremely hard. Uh, I've got an upcoming trip to, uh, a possible prospect, I, I won't say out loud here, but the date is February first. Uh, it's someone that's looking to come in our community, uh, perhaps the Lakeview community, and we're going to go check this, we're gonna, we're gonna vet this company proper, okay? So you are welcome to come on that trip, and I'll, I'll have you with more details. Uh, finally, there's a way to gain some revenue that we need. We are in the process of auction, that's moving along pretty good. We have not selected an auctioneer. I think perhaps we'll do some of this online and some the old-fashioned way as well. So we continue to, uh, to get our inventory up for that. Uh, I've got Charles Taylor working on that speaking, he's doing a pretty good job, so that's just the small boys I have serving.
Thanks. Moving right along, on the old business, number eleven, Arches. Um, letter eight, third reading, Arches by Dillon County Council to amend this, going to have Dillon County, the rezoning of Arches Way, known as Tap Gutt, number one three two, and one three seven, General Commercial, G C District Two, Residential Two, R S Two. District requires motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I serve?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have with us here who would like to present more of this, this is.
This is Jed's National.
Uh, they're your partner, they're your partner.
Right, you elaborate on that a little bit, on the Arches reading.
No, no, you can't.
I'll motion.
I made a motion that, um, we was under Arches Way and, uh, tax math on the one thirty-two and one thirty-seven, General Commercial, G C, uh, Residential R S Two.
Second.
Right.
Okay, any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving right along, on the Arches reading, third reading. Letter B, third reading, authorizes the issuance and sale of not taken C three B two and five mile general obligation bond, series two seventeen of Dillon County, South Carolina, fixing the form and details of the bond, authorized determine, of the county council and county administrator to determine certain matters relating to the bond, providing for the payment of the bond, disposition of the proceeds of the bond, and other matters relating thereto. Need motion to approve third reading of the bond.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this time I'd like to introduce Attorney Ben Ziegler.
Hey.
Is our representation.
Then you'll take the podium, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gray, would you give him the podium, please?
Chairman, members of council, pleasure to be with you. My name's Ben Ziegler. I'm a lawyer with Colonel Paints or St. Martin, Boy, in Florence. Um, I practice in the municipal finance of Bond Field, and I've had the opportunity to work with a number of entities in Dillon County over the years, so I've never had, have had the opportunity to work with y'all, and certainly appreciate the opportunity. Um, this is third reading of your, uh, geo-bond ordinance that has previously, I believe, been presented to you. Uh, I've taken it, um, it was done initially by another firm, we've come in and have been given the opportunity to, to help finish this out. Um, consultation with County Attorney Mr. Barry, what we've done is, we've taken the initial ordinance, gone over it, made a few changes to it, nothing substantive, nothing that changes the amount you're borrowing, or the terms, or the use of proceeds, or anything like that, but basically put it in a form that we're comfortable with. We've also done a little bit more work on your assessed value, uh, to make sure y'all are within the law and not borrowing above your eight percent, uh, assessed value. So we've made some changes, it's going to look a little different, but the substance of it is the same. Basically, you're authorizing, uh, the borrowing of about three point two million dollars, not exceeding three point two million dollars, uh, that will be paid back by way of property taxes, this will be a general obligation bond. Uh, we have left the ordinance somewhat open-ended in terms of the terms that we'll apply. We'll work with, uh, Mr. Barry and, um, and his staff on exactly how many years you want to pay it back over, um, what the final principal amount will be. But if you flip to page one, number of page one, you'll see that the, the projects are the same, they're listed there in section one point oh one. The big ticket item, of course, is the Inland Port property. We've set that up so y'all can either pay that directly or reimburse yourselves for it, uh, at the time that, uh, you're, uh, able to get the bond proceeds. Uh, if you'll flip over to, uh, page five, uh, that's basically the provisions by which the amount of the bond's going to be set, maturity of the bond, the bond cannot have a maturity of more than ten years, I understand from, um, talking to Mr. Gaddy over the past week, but due to y'all going to look and pay this back as quickly as you can, so it may have a three or four-year, uh, payback. So we've given a good deal of flexibility to administration within those parameters, within the principal amounts you're borrowing, the maximum number of years, to set this up in a way that's going to be most advantageous, uh, to the county. Um, as I've discussed with Mr. Gaddy and Mr. Barry, uh, the, um, state law requires there's a sixty-day waiting period starting today to get third reading of this ordinance. There's a period of sixty days that you basically have to wait before you close the bond, so we can look at it. Closing this bond in around first of April. Uh, under state law, because of the size of the bond and the potential maturity schedule, it has to be competitively sold. Uh, you have to publish a notice in a paper of statewide circulation, offering the bond for sale. Uh, you'll receive bids on a certain date, we'll work with the administration to set all that up. And bids come in, you have to award to the lowest bid under state law. So between now and first of April, to get third reading of this ordinance, we'll work to get that sale set up, get the best deal possible for the county, you'll have that money in your bank, bank account, late March, early April. Be happy to answer any questions you might have on this one.
Yes, sir.
The term has not been set yet?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea?
Yeah, it's going to be a, a short route.
Yes, I'll look, four years.
Okay, I know in the past, right now, we'll be debt-free in four years.
Yes, sir.
There's been a lot of concern about Dillon County and Max Dow, or most of their borrowing capacity, but we knew exactly what we were doing when we set the previous bonds up. And four years from now, I think you will agree, we will be dead.
Yes, sir.
And that's why I, I agree, I think we need to short-term it as much as possible, because I don't like the idea of long-term and any debt tying to hands of future council and the taxpayers. I think it's better to keep it short-term if we can afford to.
That's very reasonable. Thank y'all. I'm always available just down the road in Florence, if y'all have any questions, uh, Mr. Barry, Mr. Gaddy, anywhere to find me. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Need motion this time, pass third reading. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving right along. The old business, number eleven. Letter C, first read, that Arches authorized the execution in delivery of, and incentive agreement between Dillon County, South Carolina, and a company involved in an economic development project known as Project Badger, execution and delivery pursuant to Title Four, Chapter One and Twenty, and Title Twelve, Chapter Forty-four of Dakota laws, South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended, of a fee in lieu of tax agreement and a special source revenue agreement. A agreement between Dillon County and such, and such company with execution and delivery of one or more grant agreements relating to the project, the acquisition of certain real properties by the county in the convenience of such property in connection with the project, division by the county of certain companies and private infrastructure in support of the project and matters relating thereto.
Mr. Chairman, this is just general in nature, and this was at the urging of Project Badger itself, which is an indication that we're getting a lot closer. Uh, but there's nothing, uh, when it's by title law, it's very general, so there's no, nothing to be concerned at this time, we'll get more detail in the second, second, three, two.
All right, moving right along, the old business, number twelve, appointments, eight.
Mr. Chairman, he said it was just for Title One, he did not. But you're still, yes, sir, but you're still.
You want to take a motion?
Yes, sir, please.
We'll do that, yeah. All right, need a motion?
Need a motion.
Motion still approved Title One, need a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, moving right along, number twelve, appointments. Letter A, Dillon County Public and Private Economic Development Project Board, District One, James Campbell. Now, Campbell, do you have anyone this time to the zone of appeal?
Yes, sir, I like, uh, pointer, Mr. Swift, I think.
Okay. Mr. Swift, the third pointer to the zone of appeal. Okay, do we get a, a second?
A second.
A second, okay, any discussion? Discussion, all in favor of Mr. Swift? Second. Any opposed? Moving right along, an appointment, number twelve. Letter B, Dillon County Library Board, District Seven, Stevie Brooks.
They don't want Thelma and Burns.
Thelma and Burns. Okay, do we get them, uh, second?
A second.
Okay, we got a second, any discussion with Thelma and Burns? Okay, all in favor of Mr. Thelma, urge to the library board. Okay, any opposed? All right, moving right along, an appointment. Number twelve, out of the seat, Dillon County Public and Private Economic Development Project Board, District Two, Jack Scott. District Three, Archie Scott. Okay, and District Four, T L Finns. You guys got, Scott, you got anybody?
I don't. Partnership.
I'm not down in the partnership. Okay, only economic development board, I'd like someone, well, I make a motion to, um, Mr. LaFon Leget serves as my officer. Only economic development board, need a motion this time to, uh, continue to let Mr. LaFon Leget serve as a officer, uh, for the chairman.
You're making a motion, no?
Yes, sir, he's on, he would be a non-voting member, uh, official member of that board, serving independent, in my capacity, in my place. Need a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of Mr. LaFon Leget serving as a officer? Chairman, all right. Mr. Finkley, you got anyone you want, sir? Not going to move a year.
Yeah, District Four, I like the real point, Dr. Linda Mann and Hayes, she said, today, was she standing up there, everybody can see her? I think she, she's doing a good job. Thank you, Linda.
Take that as a motion, appointment. Linda Mann and Hayes, do we get a second on Mrs. Hayes?
A second.
Second on Mrs. Linda Mann and Hayes on the economic development board? Any discussion? All in favor of Mrs. Linda Mann and Hayes on the economic development board? Any opposed? Opposed, all right. Moving right along. Uh, we got, the old business, number thirteen, got executive session, personnel matter, county administrator. Need a motion at this time to go in executive session, personnel matter, county administrator.
Make a motion.
Motion be a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of going to executive session? I want to let y'all know, we will return out of executive session, there was no action taken, and there can be no action taken such as voting of anything of that sort in executive session, so we did not do that. In itself, that would be a violation of the law. So we're going to refer back to the agenda, we do have some actions that we have to take. And if you look at your agenda, it'll be, it'll be under, uh, new business, it'll be seven B, harnessing the county administrator and a contract. That's what that business, you know, that is before us now. And at this time, I ask for a motion to approve a harnessing the county administrator and a contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we offer Rodney Berry a contract, young county administrator.
Okay, do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussions? Okay, all in favor of harnessing Mr. Rodney Berry, uh, for Dillon County Administrator, and with a, a contract, it says he has a one-year contract. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed?
And ju, and just for the, the contract is the one that was included in the, in the package, so.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Rodney Berry, if you will please rise, uh, as chairperson of the Dillon County Council, along with fellow council member, I want to say congratulations to you, uh, as Dillon County Administrator. Uh, we pray that we all work well, I believe you will do a wonderful job. Uh, again, I just thank you, and, uh, looking forward to working with you. Anyone else have anything they want to say to the administrator at this time? He is no longer the interim, now you are down as of today Dillon County Administrator. We want to make sure we got that name.
That's great. Good job. That's a perfect.
Anything you'd like to say, Mr. Berry?
I sure would, you know, this past two months working with this group has, has just been a pleasure. You're so diverse, you know, everybody brings, uh, various talents to the table. Dillon County, I think we're fixing to see if this motor's really going to run. My bet it is going to run. Um, I'm grateful for the contract, it's so good to be back home. I've got chills running down my spine as we speak, because this is absolutely where we want to be. I look forward to working with every and each one of you, and I thank you for your confidence.
Thank you, sir. Again, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, any more business at this time? Okay, there's no more sayings or doings, as they say in church, and all parts and minds are clear. This time I will entertain, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Make the motion in there, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?